Hello, everyone. Welcome to the City of Durango. For April 19th. Time is 5:34. Have a roll call, please.
Counselor Bosmans.
Present.
Counselor Beal.
Here.
Counselor Youssef.
Here.
Mayor Protam Nosworthy.
Present.
And Mayor Baxter.
Present. Have the introduction of the.
Thank you so much. Hello, good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me here. My name is Astrid Arroyave, and I am with Community Language Cooperative. We are opening up spaces for language justice, which means that we can all express ourselves in the language of our hearts, the one that is the most comfortable to express ourselves. We are going to do this through simultaneous interpretation. I would like to share with all the present people a few guidelines to support both simultaneous interpretation and language justice. Let's please remember that Spanish is a lot more extensive than English. So let's talk slowly, as best as we can, at a comfortable place, pace, so interpreter can follow the message without having to do any additions whatsoever. This is especially important when talking about figures, numbers, quantities, acronyms, technical words, or when we are reading. At the end of this small introduction, but I am going to repeat in Spanish as well, and once the interpretation function is turned on, you are going to see in the bottom of your screen a globe icon. Please click on it. If you are in this call through your phone, look for the three consecutive dots in the upper or lower part of your screen, it depends on your model, and click on the dots, and you will find the globe icon. Click on it. On the globe icon, we are going to find the channels. Pick the one of your preference, English or Spanish. Also, you will have the option of muting the original audio, so you don't have to hear two languages. And last but not least, please silence your mic when you are not. Now, I'm going to repeat this message in Spanish. Muy buenas tardes. Muchas gracias por tenerme aquí. Mi nombre es Astrid Arroyave, y estoy con la Cooperativa Comunitaria. Estamos abriendo espacios para la justicia del lenguaje. Lo que quiere decir que podemos hablar en lo que llamamos el idioma, el cual, ese idioma en el cual podemos expresarnos lo mejor posible. Esto lo haremos a través de la interpretación simultánea. Me gustaría compartir con todos los presentes unas pequeñas guías muy sencillas pero muy importantes para apoyar tanto la interpretación simultánea como la justicia del lenguaje. Por favor, hablemos lo más despacio posible, a un ritmo cómodo y conversacional, de manera que la intérprete pueda seguir su mensaje sin tener que recurrir a ninguna edición. Al final de este mensaje, usted verá, y una vez se encienda la función de interpretación, usted verá la parte de abajo de su pantalla, el globo de, bueno, del globo terráqueo. Si está en su teléfono, puede ver los tres puntitos consecutivos, que pueden estar en la parte de arriba o de abajo de su pantalla. Haga clic allí, y el globo terráqueo saldrá. Haga clic en su icono del globo terráqueo, y allí podrá encontrar los canales, y puede escoger el de su preferencia, inglés y español. Una recomendación muy importante es ir muy despacio cuando estemos hablando de cifras, números, cantidades, siglas, palabras técnicas, o cuando se esté leyendo. Y ya para finalizar, ustedes podrán, tendrán la opción de silenciar el audio original para que no tengan que oír los idiomas al mismo tiempo, y cuando no estén hablando, por favor, silencien sus micrófonos. Esto es todo. Muchísimas gracias. Ya podemos encender la interpretación. This is all. Thank you so much. You can start interpretation function right now. Thank you so much.
On to actual or perceived content. Public participation.
No one has raised their hand, Mayor.
Proclamations and present. Have our first one. Proclamation.
I believe Marty Poole.
Okay. Earth Week Proclamation, April 18th through the 23rd. Whereas in the spring of 1970, Senator Gaylord Nelson created Earth Day as a way to highlight the need to protect the air, waters, natural environment, and public health from the damages of unchecked pollution. And whereas Earth Day is recognized nationally and globally in April, and will occur on Friday, April 22nd, for the year 2022. And whereas the City of Durango will celebrate Earth Day with the Four Corners Office of Resource Efficiency, citizens, businesses, and organizations on Saturday, April 23rd, 2022, with a parade along Main Street and an event in Rotary Park. And whereas Earth Day has historically and continues to be focused on both celebrating our earth, as well as recognizing the negative impacts of human-caused pollution and environmental degradation. And whereas the City of Durango's 2022 Strategic Plan and 2017 Comprehensive Plan recognize our community's commitment to utilizing natural resources in a sustainable manner and to safeguarding our surrounding natural environment for the health and well-being of our community. And whereas pollution, including greenhouse gas, continue to affect our planet's natural systems in negative ways. And whereas the City of Durango recognizes the importance of communities around the world to collectively to reach zero greenhouse gas emissions by mid-century, and has committed to greenhouse gas emissions and renewable energy goals by Resolution R. 2019-32 and Resolution 20, sorry, R. 2021-71. And whereas the City of Durango recognizes its role in empowering businesses and organizations in our shared efforts conserving natural resources and reducing waste and pollution. And Durango is a community that shares the planet Earth with all other human communities and living things. Now therefore, I, Kim Baxter, Mayor of the City of Durango, do hereby proclaim the week of April 18th through April 23rd, 2022, to be Earth Week, and encourage citizens to celebrate by learning about what the City of Durango and community organizations are doing to protect our planet's natural systems, by exploring what individual citizens can personally do to help reduce negative impacts on our natural environment, and by taking time to connect with and appreciate the beauty of our earth and all the life it supports. And Marty Poole to accept this. And I was there on the very first Earth Day in 1970. Yep, celebrating.
Wow. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor Baxter, and City Council, and to the citizens of Durango. I am just so appreciative to live in a community that supports and recognizes the beauty of our planet and, and importance of a healthy environment. And I invite everyone to join in on the celebrations this Saturday, and also to take the week to do what you can to explore the ways that you can help the environment. Thank you.
I believe that.
I will indeed. It was on my.
Okay, on to 6.2, city operational update. 6.2.1.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Devon Schmidt, the Budget and Strategy Officer for the City of Durango. Bear with me one moment while I pull up our reports here and share them with the folks Excellent. So I am pleased to present you all quarter one financials, followed by the quarter one CIP. So starting off, this is a summary page where folks are able to look at each fund at a very summary level. I'm going to take you, I'm going to actually scroll past these and take you the greater detail, starting with the general fund. So, starting with the general fund, our expected revenues collected was 18%. Our actual revenues collected was 21. So that variance really puts us ahead at 0.6 million of budgeted collections for revenue. We've listed the general fund as positive for this. The percentage received is higher than the historical by 3%. So compared to the cumulative historical monthly actuals, the city is ahead or behind in a couple of different categories that I wanted to highlight. Sorry, I'm finally at the general fund, so apologies for that. So as we're looking at this, taxes and fees are ahead 1.4 million. I did want to note that while they are ahead for 2022 budget, we 0.9 over 2021. So based on really the economic trends that we're currently seeing at the state level, we're expecting April collections to start to reflect that decreased budget, and that has to do with several factors. So one of those is that federal stimulus has really waned in 2022. Higher interest rates, inflation, and the continued supply chain disruptions were at a local level. Other factors that we're looking at is the war in Ukraine, the ongoing issues with the pandemic, the mounting inflationary pressures, and really, all of those are starting to pose a bit of a risk, and some economists are starting to consider that we may be going into sort of a recessionary period. So we're monitoring the sales tax closely. At a local level, we are, the foot traffic, we're hearing the foot traffic, is a little bit less than we would typically expect in March. So we are expecting to start to see that decrease on the budget while we had a very strong first quarter, which is always great. We are monitoring that, so we wanted to make counsel. So as we move in, I just wanted to note a little bit on some of the taxes and fees. So all charges and services are ahead, about $100,000. Recreation Center is actually starting to normalize, and so we're up significantly. Historically, we're about $12,000 behind, so that's positive. Chapman Hill revenues are seeing an increase from the historical five-year average, and then with the miscellaneous revenues, with those admin fees from the 1915, with those being reduced, obviously that would show a reflection over looking at it from the trend analysis. So moving on into the general fund expenditures, so we're right on track with that. We expected to spend 20%, and we are right at 20%. Expenditures currently do exceed revenues by $347,000, but that's expected because we generally go into arrears at the first six months of the year. So nothing to be concerned with. We're still considering the general fund in a very positive area. And so as we come into looking at general fund expenses by function, you will see that there's a couple areas where we have just listed as cautionary as a. So one of those is IT. IT does all of their software at the beginning of the year. So while we have it listed as cautionary, that's because it doesn't fall within the 25% expected to exceed a budget. Nothing for us to be concerned about. Same thing with city council. There's a lot of dues and memberships where those items would, where we have it listed there. And then under economic development, that one's really at 32% instead of 25, so we'll just continue to. As we're looking at the general fund fund balance, the ending fund balance, we've grown 57% or $8 million between 2020 and 2022. And that really has to do with the conservative budgeting practices from 2021 and forward. So I think that's a really positive thing for us to note, and as we move in, about what to do with that additional spending, or what not to do, depending on what is happening with the economy. So moving on to the internal service funds. So we have the general services fund, so we have that reflected as a positive in budget, or 2020, yeah, 2022 budget process. We did increase the revenues to cover somewhat of the fund balance deficit. We were starting, for the SURF program, for the SURF fund, that one is also listed as positive. We're still continuing to see a national shortage and the inability to secure vehicles. We're able to purchase some, but we're still seeing it. So that's really a big portion of what we're seeing there. Moving on to the technology replacement fund, our IT group has been working to come up with a replacement strategy, and so we'll be spending in this fund in the future quarters. For building maintenance, this is a brand-new fund as well in 2022. The transfer from SURF was completed in February, so that $1 million back to council for projects that would be needed. For the self-insurance fund, we have this listed at cautionary. And when we look at this fund, our benefit administrator buys that we should really have reserves. We're just under that on an actual basis at $450,000. But if you see here on this 2022 projected fund balance, we're looking at quite a bit higher. So we'll certainly look at that, figure out, you know, are we overfunding this? What, how do we keep this into that correct area for self-insurance? And then finally, risk management, same situation. We have that listed as cautionary. We have a, so again, we're monitoring. Moving on into the water fund. As we look at the water fund, the expected revenue collections was 15%. We actually collected 15, so we're positive on that. As we look at the expense comparison, we are at about 7%. Or historically, we should spend about 7%. We're actually at 5%. The operating expense will increase with that transfer to capital projects once that occurs. And then as an additional note, finance is currently working with SALT Fab on some of those reserve policies. Okay, and moving on into the sewer operating fund, we are showing a, sorry, revenues collected, we would have expected about 22%. We're at 23% for the expenditures compared to budget. It's at 20%. And we would have actually expected to, or we actually spent 22. I did want to note that we're, this is positive because we have simple payments and in, at the first quarter. So still positive for the sewer fund. As we move on to the airport, expected revenue collections was 12%. Actual revenue collections was 14%, so we're humming along there nicely. For expenses, we would have expected 21%, we're at 20. And just as a side note, the airport is at 3% above 2019 actuals. So we're moving along with the airport as expected. As we move on to the trash and recycle fund, expected revenue collection was 22%, actual was 26%. And so again, positive expected expenditures, 20%. And actual expenditures was 19, so we're right on track there with current revenues exceeding expenditures by $242,000. For transportation services fund, we would expect to be at 6%. And actual revenues were at 7%. I did want to make a note that transportation services will receive 100% reimbursement for services, with the exception of multimodal and parking, and that's with the CARES and the CRISA funding. So that's a really positive thing that we're seeing for 2022. And I did want to note, too, that parking revenues really continue to lag and show a shortfall with the relation to the bump-out program. As we're looking at expenditures, we're at 10%, and actual at 10. So currently revenues are exceeding expense by $208,000. However, with that quarterly reporting that will occur for the grant reimbursement, we would expect to see that swap. Moving on to the special revenue funds. So we have the grants fund first off, and so obviously we don't have any, there with it being a new fund. We have 27% grant revenues collected, and expenses are really based on grant projects in this fund. And so until we have some more council designation around the ARPA funds, those will, to remain in balance, we'll hold those revenues. I'm going to talk about the, both of the 2005 quarter cent for debt service and the 2005 post together, the revenues and expenditure, or since the revenues match each other, so as we're looking at. The expected revenue collected would have been 19% or approximately 400. Actual collections was 25% or $611,000, or really about 6% ahead, or approximately $138,000 compared to historical actuals. Positive for both of these funds. And then just to make a note, the '05 is really for, the first quarter cent for the debt service pays for Florida Road and the library, and the second pays for parks and recreation projects. So I'm going to do the same thing here with the 2015 and the 2019, so that you're able to see collectively. And so again, we would have expected to collect 19% or approximately $907,000 of total budgeted revenues. Actual revenues collected was 25% or approximately $1.2 million. And so again, 6% ahead, 277 compared to historic. I did want to make a quick note on the 2015 for this fund balance. Our projected ending fund balance for the budget after the reappropriation of some project is reflecting a negative. However, we are watching these, and as we continue to see the sales tax numbers, we would, we wouldn't, we of course wouldn't end the year with that. So just wanted to make that note. And for the 2019, those revenues follow the same pattern as well, and you can see. As we're moving on to the lodgers tax fund, revenues here are $300,000 over budgeted. And as a reminder, we obviously increased that from the 2% to the 5.5% in July of 2021. And for the Durango Renewal Partnership, again, a new fund, any expected revenue. We are reflecting this fund as a positive. And last but not least, we have the Housing Innovation Fund. Again, a new fund, so actual revenues collected is 18%, showing that as a positive, as the transfer from the general fund increased those revenues. And for the expense, I mean, it's really designated for those housing-related items. So I'll pause for a second and take any questions before I move on to the quarter one CIP report.
I have a question. Are you going, no, let me just ask a question. I, I feel like I'm missing something here, and maybe I didn't see it. Can you go, for example, to the water fund and tell me what the current fund balance
So to your point, Counselor Bosmans, we did make a change in this budgetary fund balances. We would be happy to add an attachment, as we typically do in the monthly report, the actual fund balances and where we are to date. We were trying to set it up a little bit differently, just to have that delineation between actuals and budgeted and kind of where we're headed, but we can absolutely add that attachment as we typically do.
Do you mind going to the water fund?
No problem.
I'll pick that as an example.
Sorry, it's smack dab in the middle of this report.
That's the one. So it is my understanding, first of all, thank you for the presentation and the update. It is my understanding that the actual water fund balance combined of operating and construction is probably over 18 million. Is that a correct assumption or estimate?
I could get you the exact number, but what this is reflecting is this would show all of the activities for 2022, and kind of where we're projected to end up at the end of 2022.
Now, since that is a significant difference, and I think in the city, we have a track record of budgeting for major, a lot of projects, and maybe not all of them have been completed over time, so there's always been a significant remaining balance or added balance. So I'm wondering if it's beneficial to add, to either say, or add a column, or say what the actual fund balance is, and then projected expenses. It's probably just a minor change in the way you format it, but I think people see 11 million, they think, okay, that's still a lot, but 18 million or 19 million maybe is a, is a very, is a significant difference. And I think we need to reflect, when we do this, we need to be aware and also reflect to our community how much money there is in these fund balances, actual. And at the end of the year, we'll see if the projection ends up close to the actual number.
Sure, we can, that's an easy attachment that we can add. We typically have it at the end of the monthly report. This was a change that we tried to make to show what's actually available and kind of where we're projecting revenues to expenses. But no problem, we can absolutely add that attachment to this report and repost it online.
All right. Thank you very much.
No problem. Any other questions?
I just want to say, if you, I just want to say, with one of the really cool things on this, is that when you're looking at the summary, that if you go, you can click here for detailed information, and you click on it, and you get everything you need to know, and all the information. This was the first time I'd actually played with that, and I really, really like it.
Yep, absolutely. So it's going to be on any one of these, to your point.
Exactly, exactly.
So in every area, you can find that detailed information. It's awesome.
Excellent. No problem. So I'm going to actually switch over to the quarter one report.
It's a testament, Devon, that we have no, very few questions.
Absolutely.
Testament to your work.
So I did want to let Council know, we did send out a PDF of this, but I'm going to actually jump into OpenGov to show you this report, because it functions quite a bit better actually in the system. So I'm going to stop sharing for a minute and then pull up that report. And let's see. And to Mayor's point, if you come and click on any one of these hyperlinks, it'll bring you into our transparency portal. So let me go ahead and reshare. Okay, perfect. So some, I have a couple items to highlight on this CIP report. This is our first one that we're doing quarter one, and our first one that we're doing within OpenGov that has some mapping capabilities. As we continue to, as our CIP really, we'll actually move this into ESRI, ArcGIS, so that we're able to do some body mapping, but this is kind of a first start. So you can click on any one of these little bubbles, which will show you a project, and it'll give, it's currently based on latitude and longitude, so it's not extremely definitive with how long, if it's a big long-street project or things of that nature, but it does give the, so high level. I did want to mention, we're starting to see that some of the bids that are a little bit higher with concrete costs and labor costs, so any of those that require an appropriation would be brought back to council for consideration. So on this report, we show 89 projects. So we have 18 projects. So we have 18 projects. Some of the neat things you can do on this report is you can click in here and you can search for the. You can also search by what's in completion, what's in design and what's in. So a couple neat things that we have with OpenGov. So as we look at just kind of the project statuses, so we have 28 projects that are either in engineering, site plan, or they're in other aspects of design. Pre-construction is another category we have listed. And those are projects that are moving forward to acquire land, right away to move forward on a project. It may be within RFP or a bid or the practice and negotiations are being completed. Projects currently listed in pre-construction. We have 11 projects that are currently in construction and seven projects that are listed. So that's really the high level of what we're showing for this first quarter report on some of these projects. Is there any questions I can answer for counsel?
Very good.
Yeah, it is good.
Okay. Excellent. And so my final one that I will share with you all is the Sales and Use Tax Report. We've already talked quite a bit about. Want to just give the opportunity to show kind of where we're at. So this is really showing all funds, sales and use tax collections through March. And so to my earlier point, we would have historically expected to be at about 19% of budget or approximately 6 million. Current collections are really at 25% of budget or 8.5 million. So I just wanted to show that high level of where we are at by each fund, sales and use tax. So we'll continue to monitor what's going on in the local and the national economy and continue to give those updates to council. Any questions on this report? All right. Well, thank you so much.
Welcome, Turi.
Good evening. Could we, if Gage Sippi or and/or Maura Compton are in attendance, could we promote them to be participants?
I'll send them in right now. And who else, Turi?
Gage Sippi and Maura Compton.
I don't see Gage. Maura's on, Maura's on her way.
While that's occurring, I am going to screen share if I can figure this out.
Go back to the Zoom one. Turi?
Yes.
Go to the Zoom. There you go. And then share.
Thank you. My name is Freehne Ikem. I'm the Parks and Recreation Director for the City of Durango. I'm here tonight to give you just a high-level presentation and update on progress we've been making for Durango Mesa Park. With me tonight, Maura Compton should be, and she'll be able to step in and provide any commentary, maybe even present a slide. Gage Sippi, who's also with the Durango Mesa Park Foundation, was supposed to be here, but I have full confidence that Maura can answer any question he may have been able to as well. Also, if you have any specific questions regarding some of our development process, Vicky Vandergrift is in attendance in the audience tonight and she can answer some specific questions. So again, just really wanted to give you a high-level things that we're working on. But before we get into that, I just wanted to kind of give an update or kind of a reminder of what the Durango Mesa Park project is all about, not only to remind our counselors who have been on board for quite a while, but also some of the new counselors. In 2018, an area master plan was developed and adopted. And in that plan, there were several areas, I kind of call them chunks, chunks of areas where there are specific activities that will be occurring. One of the areas is the county fairgrounds, which would move from the site next to the recreation center up to the Durango Mesa Park. And it's this kind of tannish chunk right in the middle. We don't have a lot of detail in that area and the county is really. To the south and east is the, I'm sorry, to the west and to the south is the Special Events Complex. And that area would be a large entertainment area where there's band shelters and lawns and things like that, where we could host large concerts and events and things like that. And that will eventually be more or less a foundation project in the future moving forward. The other area is a mountain sports complex, which is to the east and to the south of the, on the mesa. And that's an area that has turf fields and some other things for active recreation, where we could do soccer games across, all those sorts of things. That project will probably be several years out. The area that we're really kind of focusing on is in the middle and just north of the fairgrounds, and that's a cycling complex. The first project that at least the city is interested in completing with the foundation is the Bike Park. And we've been working towards making that a reality. Also, just to remind you, in 2017, La Plata County did develop a master plan for what they called a multi-event center, which is essentially their fairgrounds. And then the Durango Mesa Park Foundation did create a Phase One Plan in 2019 and 2020. In reality is what we're really trying to implement right now. If Maura, you're available, you, we wanted to just kind of give you an update on some current and past activity that's been occurring.
Yeah, thank you, Turi. Just an audio check, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. And then also, if you could let Tom know that Gage is, he is on.
Thank you.
Great. Yeah, so thank you for that update. And as many of the previous counselors and, and now our new counselors know, this has been a multi-year project with, with planning, starting with the county and then working through the city's area plan and then coming to that refined plan, which Turi just presented. But it's important to note that we've had some key activities on the mesa. For five years, Meltdown on the Mesa hosted a kind of summer fall event. This was a music venue or a music event, and it unfortunately won't be happening this year, but possibly again in the future. And then Gage and I worked on bringing in the Colorado High School Mountain Bike State Championship. That happened in 2018, 2019, and then was supposed to be 2020, but it was moved to 21. And that event was secured for three years. That is not coming back this year, but Gage continues to work on possibly bringing in one of the regular races, regular season races, and possibly state champions back to our area. Obviously, that was extremely beneficial, not only for our high school teams that have to travel significantly to the front range or to the middle of the state, but also to bring Colorado, New Mexico, and Wyoming to Durango. And there was a really good crossover with Fort Lewis. There was a significant increase in Fort Lewis college tours. And then Fort Lewis also tracked students that took those tours and then ended up applying and ended up being admitted and attending Fort Lewis College. So that was a really great partnership and alignment, and we hope to bring that back again. And then Iron Horse, you know, with the change with COVID and downtown, having the, the mountain bike races and Criterion races during Iron Horse were amazing, but with the bump outs and those changes, Gage brought the Iron Horse events, the mountain bike race up to the mesa on, for 2021. And then that will be happening again this Memorial Day of this year. So those are the, the past events and, you know, we have a few current events that are taking place, but it's fairly limited at the moment.
Thank you. Any questions about that? Any questions for Maura about events or any activity? Okay, we'll move on. One of the large hurdles that we've been working towards getting over is, you know, determining what the development process is going to be for this site. One of the initial thoughts was that we would go through a PD process through the county. We've reevaluated that and right now we think we have the foundation, the county, and the city on board with going through an annexation process. The annexation process is in accordance with the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county regarding joint land use planning, and it implements the Durango Mesa Area Plan and the city's comprehensive plan. So I think we have some alignment and we're going to be starting that process. I think later, even in April, we're going to start meetings between the county, the city, and the foundation to start moving that process along. The other thing that we've been working on and hope to make some more progress on is MOU between the city and the, and the foundation. Within that, some of the structural elements that we wanted to maybe mention tonight is within 18. And that would identify and list the shared infrastructure and all the associated costs. And then hopefully we could get to a point where we could identify percentage of the costs to be assigned to each of the parties, the foundation, the city, and the county. We knew that we couldn't put in those costs right now into the MOU because costs have changed and we wanted to make sure that we updated those. And we also wanted to make sure that we were talking about water and sewer and getting the alignments right on. And we still have a few discussions on those, but we wanted to give ourselves a timeline to get that put together. At the end of the agreement or somewhere near the middle of the agreement, we want to create a Durango Mesa Park Management Committee. So in the future, when we do start hosting events, the city starts hosting events, maybe in the foundation, in the county, that we have good coordination process so that we don't overlap with events and create logistics issues up on the mesa. The foundation and city are cooperating in the design, construction, and management connection flow trails, and I'm going to get to that in just a little bit. But there's some demonstration trails that cross, cross city-owned land and foundation-owned land, and I'll bring up a map and. The foundation is planning to design and build the Bike Park with the intention of ultimately reaching an agreement with the city of Durango to co-manage, lease, and/or co-own the Bike Park and related facilities. And part of that is going through some of the operations, management, and identifying the costs and figuring out how we can best do that together. And then at the end of Phase One, when we get the infrastructure of the Bike Park, all that kind of good stuff, the foundation's intention is to convey the mountain sports complex land to the city of Durango for future development for soccer fields and things like. So those are some of the elements in the MOU that we're working on and trying to get all the language appropriately in place. Moving on. As mentioned, Phase One is really working on a Bike Park. The foundation has been great. They've reached out to a lot of communities throughout the United States. They even invited city staff to go on one visit over to Bentonville, Arkansas. And the reason they reached out to all these agencies and organizations is we really have one shot at building these and building them right for sustainability issues. One of the things we learned is they want to, we want to create social and family spaces. We want people to hang out up there, things like that. And then we want to appropriate, appropriately connect Durango commercial areas to the, to, and neighborhoods to Durango Mesa. There's been a lot of discussion about how we best do that, and we wanted to make sure that we got lessons learned from other communities. This is kind of the, one of the things that we wanted to, to implement moving into 2023. We've been talking about creating some demonstration trails, not only to show the progress and commitment to the community, but also just to really kind of show the community what flow trails are like, how the Bike Park might be different than the current trails that we have within the Durango community. So we've been working with the foundation, who's hired Progressive Trail Designs, they're out of Bentonville, Arkansas, and kind of come up with some conceptual alignments to move some of this trail development along. We've also been talking with, well, not only with Durango Foundation or Mesa Park Foundation and the city, but really trying to bring along some of our other partners and include them in this process as well. That's really the majority of the presentation. Again, we just wanted to kind of get in front of you and let you know the progress. It's kind of been a bit of a slog and, and actually a lot of the hard work is still in front of us, but I wanted to make sure that you know that the partnership is good and we're continuing to move forward. With that, we'll open it up and take any questions you may have.
That's great. If.
Gage, was there, is there anything he might want to add to the conversation?
Can you hear me on that side, folks?
We can, Gage, thank you.
Okay, sorry, I'm sitting in the front seat of my pickup in a parking lot in Albuquerque, so not a, not a normal. I think the only thing we would add is just making sure that we have our full commitment to work with the city and the county from a foundation standpoint to develop these entities and the Bike Park around of that. And again, I would, I think the thing I'd like to mention most is how much support we've gotten from the Parks and Rec Department on moving this idea forward and the collaboration that's going on. So we're really encouraged as we move through 2022 that we're going to make some progress this year and a lot of progress next. So it's, it's all looking good moving forward. So thank you for the support from the city.
Excellent, Gage. Thank you for working together with us, partnership to make this happen.
Absolutely.
Any questions, counselors?
Again, Turi and Maura, I think it's fantastic. A lot of work and a huge project that will last a lifetime. You mentioned the memorandum of understanding and you said cost estimates. Is it based on cost estimates or on percentages?
So that's still some of the discussion. And in the MOU that we're drafting right now, it's really to get at putting in language that we want to develop some of that, an Amendment A or add-on later on. We want to get to some more accurate costs, more accurate understanding of our infrastructure and what we'd be putting up there so that we can get to. And then at that point, I think we'd get to the, to the discussion of, these are some of the cost shares and percentages that we'd be looking at. So the MOU would be the first step, and then adding an amendment or an Attachment A to that MOU would be the second.
Okay, well, thank you. Keep it up.
Turi, I'll follow up on that. And first of all, great work and thank you, Maura and Gage. With those, the percentage of cost shares, how would you avoid committing future councils to a budgetary requirement?
So I, so a lot of the infrastructure costs will be identified and hopefully with the, the funding that we've allocated, that the county's allocated and we hope to get a good chunk of the infrastructure cost installed within this first phase.
Okay.
So a lot of those percentages would probably be identified and then are taken care of within Phase One, so.
So they're not going, they're not going on ad infinitum?
Not in inf, not infinite. And then as we develop, go into Phases Two, Three, Four, then I think we would have some additional conversation. But I think the MOU also puts in some language that these are some of the general percentages and cost shares that we, we would like to move forward with for at least Phase One and would recommend future phases.
Thank you.
Just depending on, you know, what it looks like.
And if you'll remember, last year or the year before, all went into this fund that's going to help us upfront, so.
Yep. Okay.
Well, thank you, guys, for joining us tonight and for the. Will the design of the park with progressive trail design include, you know, public opportunities for the public to see those designs as they're in progress and or?
I'll defer to Maura and Gage on that one.
Um, yes. Yeah, go ahead, Gage.
So yeah, to answer that question, yes. And so what we're endeavoring on right now, progressive trail designs, if we all kind of scale back three years ago, there was a general master plan for the mesa and the Bike Park was included in that, but those were very rough sketches of what the facility might look like. We are now fine-tuning that with the master plan. As we continue to fine-tune that master plan, we'll share it with the communities and our partner, the community and our partner to get feedback and make sure that we are identifying the proper items that we want in that location. So when the master plan is finalized and we go in. So when the master plan is finalized and we go into the construction of that, we've had public input, we've had partner input, and we're building the best possible product we can at the time we go into construction, so.
That's so exciting. When do you expect the master plan to be completed with progressive trail design in that process?
We hope within 2022. So progressive trail designs, three times in the last six months, they will have another visit coming up shortly, so they've done some of the ground truthing. And then once we get them here for another visit, they will go back, sharpen up their pencil, take in more of the input. We did a week-long process with progressive trail designs in December here in Durango where we brought in stakeholders to give their input as well already. And so they will be able to go back after doing the final ground truthing and build this master plan. And they will send us versions of it as we move along, so 30%, 60%, 90%, so we can get some approvals along the way and input to make sure that by the end of 2022, we have a working document.
Excellent, thank you so much. It's so exciting.
Great.
Thank you very much, everyone. We really appreciate the update. Exciting to see all of this happening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
So we're on to item 6.2.3.
Thank you for having me. I'm, this is my first time here in council chambers presenting, so I think I've been watching how to do this. I will show my screen here. Didn't like that. Well, this view is.
Maybe we'll do a slideshow.
I shouldn't have said it was my first time. Well, I can just go through the deck here without sharing through Zoom or, yeah, it is not liking that at all. Well, I can go without the pictures and the text and just, yeah.
Well, what you were sharing.
No, it's, it won't, it won't let me.
Can you close it and reopen it again, maybe?
Yeah, that is excellent idea. Restart, right? If, if one in doubt. Hmm. What did you do, Turi?
I think.
Devin was having problems with her.
Do you need to sign into office on that PowerPoint? Because it doesn't have a sign in on it and Turi was on PDF, so it may be in office.
Possibly, but Victor's the one that signed into that computer right now.
I also have a PDF.
I think the PDF will probably end up working.
Would that work? All right, take two, fingers crossed.
Yep.
All right.
Nice.
Great, always have a PDF. I think that was the first week Kevin said that to me, always put something PDF. Okay, so, sorry about the delay. My name is Marty Poole. I am the Sustainability Program Manager for the city and here to give a brief operational update on sustainability. With the reminder that, of course, sustainability is integrated to in our, as a municipality and throughout our community, of course, and throughout the departments, these updates are specific to what the sustainability itself have been up to, but certainly with that collaborative effort in mind. The, as you all know, the 2022 strategic plan has some updates to the environmental sustainability and resilience section. We're focused on reducing the carbon footprint, increasing the availability of renewable energy, improving the quality and resilience of natural resources through conservation and effective management. And added for the 2022 strategic plan is provide solid waste disposal that is oriented towards recycling and reuse. Just quick updates and some high-level highlights, the sustainability plan will be coming to council study session slated for May 17th. So excited to run through that plan in more detail. We've completed integrating all the community feedback on, on the plan's structure and its contents and where it's focusing. We've completed review and feedback from city departmental staff, many of whom are at transportation, public works, parks and rec, community development, really those departments that have that environmental sustainability, strong component to their work. And, and I'm really happy to see how well the timing of all this effort has, has allowed the sustainability plan to align and integrate with, with what is included in the strategic plan. Electric vehicles, they are coming fast and furious. I will try to avoid the vehicle puns here as much as I can, but there, there's a huge transformation going on in our, in our transportation. I think we're all seeing that. Here on the ground in Durango, the library CIP project is going along well. We'll slated to have level two charging stations, four, four spots for, for charging, public charging at the library, completed by the end of this year. Doing a lot of coordination with city departments, particularly transportation and, and public works and, and with fleet analysis and the infrastructure associated with that. And overall, just city staff have our sights set on a lot of state and federal funding coming down the pike for, for electric vehicle transformation or transition. Green business certification is a, is a great example of a partnership with a local nonprofit, the Four Corners of Office, Four Corners Office of Resource Efficiency. They are slated to go to businesses throughout Durango, help them reduce their rent, you know, help them with facilities upgrades, advising on how they can, you know, green their practices. So the city has been advising on that and the city is a sponsor for that program. And again, there's the great opportunity to align with the sustainability plan, the efforts there because the plan is very much community-wide in its scope. And, and so really educating the business community on, on how they can be champions of sustainability. So this is the first pilot year for this program and really excited to see it get off the ground. The Table to Farm Compost Partnership, another partnership, this time with a private entity, Table to Farm Compost. So if you recall, an RFP for compost service partnership was put out to the public and was awarded to Table to Farm in 2021. Table to Farm continues to expand their service through community members opting in and signing up for service. And the city is supporting that through education and promotion. Table to Farm recently applied for a RREO grant application and depending on whether or not that is awarded to Table to Farm will dictate the, the path forward for continuing to expand, expand those services throughout our community and, and how the city will support that effort. The, and last but not least, the Energy Performance Contract. Myself and Jared Biggs had an excellent meeting with LPA staff just this afternoon to really understand options for paths forward around the, specifically the solar component of the Energy Performance Contract. This has been a multi-year project focused on energy and water conservation along with local solar generation on city facilities. And there's just a lot of puzzle pieces to fit together on this one. But the grant funding from the Department of Labor Affairs, Department of Local Affairs is still very much on the table, which is integral to the success of this project. And I, I do feel like we have all the information in place now to do that, that final amount of analysis, go back to McKinstry, the, the company that we contracted with for this work and discuss how we can potentially move forward, do that financial analysis and then bring that to council for, for review. So just an update on the highlights that we have going on around city sustainability and I'll open it up to questions.
I have some.
Yeah.
Thank you, Marty. Thank you for your work and this presentation. Constituents asked me this question and I think it's worth thinking about, both on your part and possibly on the part of council. The lodger's tax had an emphasis on sustainable tourism. And the question is, particularly since the, we're collecting more than we anticipated in lodger's tax, would it not be feasible or could we consider working with hotels and restaurants to install solar as their energy source, thus making themselves a little more sustainable? One question, so some possibility of working with them, using funds collected to incentivize the hotels to become more solar or renewable energy, whichever is appropriate. And the same question with regard to Table to Farm. Would it make sense to partner in some way with some of the portion of the lodger's tax to incentivize the restaurants to participate in the composting program?
Sure. So as, also as council is likely aware, the state of Colorado also voted recently on how communities can choose to utilize their, their lodger's taxes. I would say all of those ideas are certainly possibilities. They would have, they would be up to council to decide on, on how to reflect, you know, community priorities, needs, desires around where to direct funding.
I guess maybe my question is, would there be the uptake? Do you have a sense from the business community that if there was an incentive for them, that they might participate in some kind of program to address their energy efficiency?
Sure. So I, I would imagine so. You know, subscribing to Table to Farm is an added monthly expense and there are upfront expenses associated with installing solar. So yeah, financial support would, would, I can imagine would garner interest. Table to Farm would be a simpler proposition. Solar has considerations on site viability and of course would be, there'd probably be some type of partnership and coordination with LPEA on a, on a program like that.
If I may, the law regarding lodger's tax, county level and above?
Oh, thank you.
We already have the ability to allocate our lodger's tax. But I think possibly what Mayor Potem Knowsworthy might have been suggesting was, we do have a council designation and we haven't had a presentation yet on what we might do with that. Maybe this might be something.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you for that clarification, Mayor.
Yeah, and I'm not stating a position, I'm just raising, representing constituents who raised that as a possibility.
And I would just point, when we have the sustainability plan as that framework, I'm really excited for how that can guide these conversations and, and also in alignment with the 2022 strategic plan and the environmental sustainability and resilience section to, to, yeah, guide this decision-making process.
Just a comment, I want to thank you for your efforts here in sustainability. It's really important and I'm looking forward to more detailed questions and conversations in our study session.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I think that you showing us how many partnerships you have, that's what's going to make us really successful. And I love Mayor Potem Knowsworthy's suggestions on even more partnerships potentially. And I look forward to the sustainability plan in May.
Great, thank you, councilors, and yeah, have a good.
Just before you are.
Yes, sorry, Councilor Bosman.
I wanted to ask a couple of questions. Thank you for the presentation. How long have you been in this role? Remind me.
Four months.
Four months, okay. The McKinstry, I'm talking, I'm going to speak a little bit about the solar projects.
Yes.
I think we have one going on in, in process or planning at the water treatment plant? Is that correct?
That is correct. I have been working with Finance Administration and, and Public Works staff to see whether or not it makes sense to include that project as part of the Energy Performance Contract scope or to, to pursue that separate of the Energy Performance. Both options are potentially on the table and right now, exploring either option doesn't exclude the other at this time. So we're evaluating both.
And that is with McKinstry, correct? Or is it?
No, only, only if we went the route forward with including it in the scope of the Energy Performance Contract, would it be through McKinstry. I would have to check who has been working. I, I can't say for sure whether or not, if it's, if it's outside of the Energy Performance Contract, whether that's working with McKinstry or not, I can't say, but I can get back to you on that.
Do you have a ballpark idea, if you remember, what the current contract is, value contract with McKinstry for their consulting services?
The, the total cost of the project, I believe it was in the range of 5.5 million, I believe.
Oh, no, no. I have that open in front.
Oh.
For the current work that they're doing.
Oh, for the, for, just for the investment grade audit, they, they have completed.
And whatever you do with them to discuss the next steps and what's included.
Right. So I, I apologize, I don't have that figure off, off the top of my head for what we have paid McKinstry up to this point.
And maybe that will be a question. Have a chance, would you be willing to send that to me? Finance staff. Where I'm going to is that, that report is from 2020, I think. It was almost approved. And when I looked at it, I, it was before you, that's why I asked when you got on board here. That contract was for six something million and almost half went to consulting fees and contingency margins. So the actual construction costs for solar panels and everything was just over three million. And I'm just very concerned about that. And at the same time, it included all, a whole variety of assets in our city that might not be relevant or might not be necessary to be included. So have you, have you thought about just simply taking a project and installing solar panels and not having to spend double the amount of time and money on consultants and management? We have solar companies right around the corner here.
Councilor Bosman, if I may, Kevin, do you have any historical information on this maybe to help answer? Marty only being here four months, I'm not sure it's exactly fair for him to be having to be approached with these questions to answer.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Kevin Hall, Managing Director, Community Development. Just for clarity, we contracted for an energy grade audit. That work was completed, that report was accepted, we paid for that contract. We don't have a contract with McKinstry right now. What, the last time we were here with council, we talked specifically about alternatives to the collection of projects that would be part of an Energy Performance Contract through McKinstry. At that time, I think collectively, there was council opinion that we needed to go back to the drawing board and see if there's other ways to do that. That's the work Marty's been working on for the last four months. That's, that's what needs to come back to after we do the analysis he was just talking about and finishing up. Right now, we don't have any numbers from McKinstry in terms of what the cost of overhead or installation, subcontracting, any of those things right now because we're reconstituting this thing to see if the solar comes out, to see if there's facility improvements that maybe don't make sense three years after we first talked about this because of changes in our facilities or, you know, the results of COVID and how we're looking at things differently. So it's a, it's a new analysis and we're not there yet with the, kind of the complete package. So it's a new analysis, and we're not there yet with the, kind of, the complete package. We're fully aware of the concerns that were brought forth. That's probably almost a year ago, I bet, not quite. And Marty has been working on that pretty diligently with our finance department, with all of the departments, to find out, you know, what makes sense to be in, what makes sense to be out. I think the other major wildcard here is LPEA and the great progress they've been making in terms of their tri-state contract and how it looks different moving forward in terms of the amount of renewables that they can bring into the community. Because if they get a better value on doing it in-house with, and I'm starting to step into your arena here, Marty, but my understanding is if they can bring in a lower-cost green energy, then it doesn't make sense maybe to put solar on buildings or on certain properties, unless it's more garden-oriented, community-oriented solar. And then again, the facilities we have and any, we're reevaluating all of that. So we're sensitive to this overhead question. We will come back with a better analysis that is probably a finer-grain detail as to how those costs break out if we choose to go that route. And that's the conversation we'll have to continue between staff and council before we get to that point.
I appreciate that. I'm just wondering what the big-picture approach is. I think everybody values environment very much. We have pretty tough standards set for us, goals set, ambitious goals set for ourselves. And if I hear you correctly, and please do correct me, because I'm probably wrong, but it seems that you're going back to the drawing board all the way in the beginning, reassessing everything and looking at what makes sense, all the assets and user consult. And I'm wondering, this is just an open question, I'm not directing here or anything, are there projects, just straight-forward buildings, that you are looking at installing solar panels with, ready to go? Here's a project, like we do on the water treatment plant.
That is one of them. Correct. I think what's happening with LPA really brings to question further analysis. And, you know, we could essentially bring you what we have and say, this is where we want to go. I think that doesn't make sense for us not to analyze it further. That's being done with staff, not with any consultant assistance right now. Although we have LPA as a guide, we have our staff as a guide, Marty's expertise. And quite frankly, McKinstry will give us feedback if we need it, but we don't have any consultant services with anybody right now on this matter. And as to whether we can parse out projects, sure, we can, but it will impact the ability to do an energy performance contract if we take out the low-cost, high-return out of it, because those things balance out in terms of the high cost, low return. But ultimately, the whole goal here is to keep in mind the council goals that they adopted and then doubled down on, quite frankly, last fall, this council did. And we're aware of that. And that's the work that Marty's moving towards, and certainly we'll take steps forward, and then there'll be, we'll need to check in. Because what we, I think what happened last time is, we got to a point where I think there were some surprises for the council that had us go back to the drawing board. You know, we had a transition last fall with staff, and I think that slowed things down a little bit. But I would say, right now, we're, you know, kind of a full steam ahead to get that analysis back to council for earnest discussion. It's not on the study session for the 17th. I don't know if we'll be there or not, but it certainly could be part of the conversation in terms of where we're at with a little more detail than you got tonight.
I appreciate that. Yeah, it would be nice to see what we're going to be presented with and where we're making progress, which direction we're going in, and what actual projects are coming up. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I, to all your questions, I'm feeling confident that the analysis that we've done up to this point and will be finalizing in the coming weeks will address these concerns. I'm hearing them, and I do feel like we have the information, all the information we need to lay out the options before council. So I look forward to bringing that to you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Marty. Appreciate it.
Thank you, council.
All right, so now we're on to seven, review the consent agenda. The consent agenda is to allow the city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item 9. May we have a reading of the consent agenda, please?
7.1 is approval of minutes of the April 5, 2022 City Council Study Session. 7.2 is approval of minutes from the April 5, 2022 City Council Regular Meeting. 7.3 is discussion and possible action concerning the 2022 City Attorney Goals. 7.4 is discussion and possible action for the approval of a resolution authorizing an appropriation from the Colorado Highway Office for the Click It or Ticket It Grant that will close by September 30, 2022. 7.5 is discussion and possible action for the approval of a resolution authorizing an additional, excuse me, authorizing an appropriation from History Colorado for the Certified Local Government Subgrant Program that will close by, excuse me, close by June 1, 2022. 7.6 is discussion and possible action concerning a resolution authorizing an additional appropriation to the Airport Capital Fund for the Runway 3-21 pavement rehab project and South General Aviation Hangar Taxi Lanes pavement rehab project. 7.7 is discussion and possible action regarding a request for funding for a 2022 Drone Show. 7.8 is discussion and possible action concerning adoption of the 2022 Strategic Plan for the City of Durango. 7.9 is final reading of Ordinance 0222-13 granting an easement to KB Durango LLC for the installation of an emergency access and associated pedestrian and landscaping improvements to service a new residential development in Three Springs, and declaring an effective date. And lastly, 7.10 is final reading of Ordinance 0222-14 approving the annexation and initial zoning for the 1275 Escalante Drive Edition, Escalante Second, to the City of Durango, and declaring an effective date.
Thank you very much, Fay. City Councilors, are there any consent agenda items you'd like to remove?
Yes, please, I'd like to remove items 7.4 and 7.7.
Hold on a second here. Any other items? Nope? All righty then. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda without items 7.4 and 7.7?
I move to approve the consent agenda items with the exception of 7.4 and 7.7.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? May we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Nosworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Baxter?
Yes. 7.4, removed item, discussion and possible action for the approval of a resolution appropriation from the Colorado Highway Office for the Click It or Ticket It Grant that will close on September 30, 2022. Counselor Youssef?
Yes. I just thought that I would like to hear from Chief Brammer, please. This is, just looks like another great example of some of the work that has been done by our police department for obtaining state grant funding for local awareness and safety in our community. I've just seen several of these come by, our consent agenda. I just wanted to take a moment to give you the opportunity to kind of consolidate these and share with our community some of the work that we've done combined.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. I'll see if I can pull my PowerPoint up. Pressure's on now, since everybody else pulled theirs.
Whoa. Okay. Just close it out.
Just click OK on them all.
On all.
On all, no.
You have a lot of reports.
Yay, no, it's up.
Yeah, that one's not mine.
All right.
Get it to share.
You gotta go to the Zoom client.
There you go.
You may have to click on the regular meeting box. There you go. And then your presentation, and then share. There you go.
Okay. My lesson in technology this evening. So again, Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you. Counselor Youssef, thank you very much for having, to allow me this opportunity real quick to cover some of our grants. So essentially, we have secured several grants over the last several years, and this is a snapshot of what those are for over the last year and a half or so, with the fiscal year included in that. 10 grants of what we secured, the total amount was $101,000 that's benefited our community and our department to be able to provide the services that the police department does. And I'd just like to briefly share with you what some of those grants are, since sometimes in the wording of them, it kind of gets lost in translation. But the Southwest Post Regional Training Grant was one that is set up regionally across the state, and those monies are set aside for training. The Peace Officers Standardization Training Board that certifies us mandates that we have 24 hours of continuing education every year. 12 of those hours have to be in perishable skills, which include a combination of either driving, arrest control, and firearms. And the other 12 can be continuing education unless there's other requirements that are in there. Our officers typically get about 80 hours of training a year between our in-service training and other schools that we send them out to, either as experts or in a specialty somewhere within their particular area. Out of that, $127,000 was allotted last year in the fiscal year for the region. The Durango PD received $31,626. The post-in-service training is what we use to offset some of our training materials and supplies against the same pool of money that the in-service, the regional training money's for, but it's for supplies and equipment. And we host a lot of training regionally because we have the experts in those particular areas, so we share those trainings out to some of the smaller agencies and help them. The Gray and Black Market Marijuana Grant is one that came out a couple of years ago to help offset some of the illicit sales of marijuana, since marijuana's become a business now, and it curtailed some of that essential bootlegging kind of activities that are out there. It can be used for equipment, it can be used for operations, and that's what we've been using. This is the new renewal one. I think the first year, we received $50,000 or $60,000 off of that grant, and then we have $21,000 essentially right now that we're getting ready to use as we move into the season. The High Visibility Enforcement Grant Program is used during high utilization of DUI enforcement. So it's those big weekends, like St. Patrick's Day, Halloween, Fourth of July, and they target specific areas. We coordinate with the state and other agencies across the state to do these blitzes to curb DUI driving through awareness. LEAF is law enforcement, law enforcement system funding, and again, that's another DUI grant that's provided by the state, but we have a little bit more control of that one. So we're able to set up which weekends and nights we want to target in order to curtail and keep people safe. The one question this night that brought this to the agenda was Click It or Ticket, and that typically is a seatbelt grant that we go out there and we do an educational campaign on. However, what it does is it also targets aggressive driving, and that's usually what we use. Seatbelt enforcement is a secondary violation of the state of Colorado, so we have to have a primary reason to stop. We typically use that aggressive driving behavior, speeding, reckless driving, stop signs, stoplights. Then we target and we look for those specific ones. There's, the Bulletproof Vest Grant is a federal grant that's put on through the Department of Justice. Our ballistic armor that we wear expires for the manufacturers every five years, but a little over $1,000 a vest, so this helps us offset that cost. There is some out-of-pocket costs that we match through the city every year, but that's why you see that one continually coming over and turning over every year. Then the ICAC Grant is another important one that we use for the federal funding. We, Josh Newman, one of our detectives, is this. The ICAC stands for Internet Crimes Against Children, and this is one that we use through the Secret Service and through Homeland Security. And Josh is the lead for this area, so he does a lot of digital forensics. He's always searching in order to find people that are either spreading child pornography or setting up situations where they're preying on kids through, setting them up through different situations. And then the last one that we do is the post-grant through the Public Safety Development one, and this is for mid-level leaders that we're sending up through scholarships up to universities that teach command. And then we have two grants that are pending right now. One of those is Officer Behavioral Health Support Grant, which is recently put out there. We haven't received the funding word back on that yet, see if, but that'll offset some of our core team activities to expand mental health throughout the community. And also a peer support program, which is basically a support network for our officers based off of their duties. It gives them a network to be able to talk to people that are, have seen like-type activities that they can support before mental health got more critical. And then the last one was a JAG Grant, and that's a justice grant, and we're working on that to try to offset some of the e-ticket, a program that we're working on right now, which is going to allow us to do electronic ticketing. And the translation, it'll help us write a ticket in any language, and it'll speed up time as well. It'll take us from anywhere between five to 10 minutes to write a ticket currently, right now, by hand, which could include errors, and this will be a ticketing process where we just type in an information, what the driver's license is, they can print it out in any language, and it'll alleviate the errors and the time, and it should cut our tickets to two to three minutes on every contact. Is there any questions for me this evening? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the update. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much for the support and everything, and I'd also like to thank Dreya over at Fin, because she finds a lot of these grants for us and is very helpful for us.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Interdepartmental working, like it. Do you have, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Item 7.4, please.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Nosworthy?
Yes.
And Mayor Baxter?
Yes, thank you. Onto item 7.7, discussion and possible action regarding a request for funding for a 2022 Drone Show. Counselor Youssef?
Yes, I pulled this because I just think that the Fourth of July Committee has been very creative in their planning and trying to create safe activities for the Fourth of July, and as we consider adopting this and approving this, I want, I thought I'd give you the opportunity to tell the community about it.
Thank you, Counselor Youssef, Madam Mayor, rest of council. I do not have a presentation as thorough and as in-depth as Chief Brammer, but I will go ahead and talk about the request for funding for a Drone Show. Earlier this year, a committee was formed, kind of informally, to this weekend, and I also would like to introduce Ellen Babers, who's our Special Events Administrator. She's been the person who's been directly involved with getting some community members involved in this committee to discuss and plan that weekend of activities. Should also recognize Pam Petrie, who's on the phone call out in Zoom world, and if we need to ask her any questions, she would, she made herself available. She's with True Western Roundup, Tim Walsworth with Business Improvement District, Jack Lewellen with the Chamber of Commerce, and Emily Spencer with La Plata County Fairgrounds have all been involved in this committee to talk about how to make this weekend fun and patriotic and safe for our community. Over the last four, four of the last five years, we have had to cancel the aerial fireworks for the community of Durango, mainly because of drought. And this year, we've been in communication with our Durango Protection District, and we do not see that situation improving this year and being able to do aerial fireworks. So the committee's taken it upon themselves to really look into alternatives. One alternative is to use funds that was, that were, are directed towards aerial fireworks and moving those to a close proximity. And Ellen, who set up some tests, actually conducted, I think, five shoots in one evening just to see what those aerial, or those close proximity fireworks. So we included the fire department in that exercise as well. The other alternative, and those fireworks are funded, just a little bit of explanation on close proximity, they go up 200 to 300 feet, but they do not have the explosion up in the sky. They're more, as they go up, and the fireworks burn out quicker. So there's limited chance for creating a fire. And in addition, we can move people closer to those close proximity fireworks upwards of 80 feet. So we tested locations in downtown Durango where we could have events and things like that. Whereas an aerial fireworks show, they usually have a fallout of upwards of 300 to 500 feet, depending on the size of the shells. So those are close proximity fireworks, and And in addition, we can move people closer to those close proximity fireworks upwards of 80 feet. So we tested locations in downtown Durango where we could have events and things like that. Whereas an aerial fireworks show, they usually have a fallout of upwards of 300 to 500 feet, depending on the size of the shells. So those are close proximity fireworks. And we can transfer the aerial funding with the same contractor that we have and do the close proximity fireworks with the same contractor. So that's kind of a no-brainer in many ways. The other option we're looking at and which we have in front of you tonight is to provide a drone show. It's about 60 drones that would be lifted up into the air, and it's about a 10, eight to show. And they would lift off at either Greenmount Cemetery, or an alternative location would be off the edge of Fort Lewis College. That is looking like about $30,000, and that's what we're asking for funding tonight with lodgers tax council directive. We intend to do, we would like to do both shows this year, drones first, and then close proximity fireworks second. And the reason we'd like to do that this year is we'd like to get just maybe some community feedback and input on, on what would work best moving into the future, because we really are not certain that aerial fireworks are an alternative for us. So this would be a kind of a test year for us. With that, I'll, I'll open it up to questions, and, and I'll just take one last opportunity to thank the committee members who are very active in, in making this happen.
Just wanted to point out that this $30,000 is being requested out of the council determination, 11% of the lodgers tax.
Correct.
Any consideration of a light show? Like a light show on Smolter Mountain or something like that?
I'm going to bring Ellen up. She's, she did a lot of work and a lot of research and, yeah.
Ellen Babers, Community Events Administrator, thank you for your question. Yes, we have considered it. We went with lower hanging fruit and more activities that happened in other cities in, in Colorado, so both fire and local, so we know them well enough to ask them what, how well it went. There was a show maybe three or four years ago at Via Cita that was a light show that did not go well at all. And so the community response when we asked that was, do not do that. So we went for the ones that have proven popular. We haven't ruled it out in the future, but we think these are the two best ones to try first.
Thank you. Questions, counselors?
I, I would also like to clarify, if we do move forward, Saturday, there is a, a large event on July 4th. Lyle Lovett and his larger band will be over at the If we do not do the drone show, we will still move forward with a, a street dance, but that would be on July 4th.
Do I have to make a motion?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate the update, it sounds exciting. Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? We have a vote, please.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Yusef?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Nosworthy?
Yes.
And Mayor Baxter?
Yes. And now we move on to item number 10, which is procedures. And the first one, point one, the election of mayor. As you all know, my term is over for this year, and I just had a couple of things I wanted to say before this has been an exceptional year to be mayor. So many things have changed. It's all been positive. We've dealt with challenges very, very well. I want to recognize that staff and the employees of the city for their quality of work, their commitment, and their expertise. All these things, it's great, we can sit up here and talk all day long, but nothing happens unless you guys make a show add that, I appreciate that. And I want to say that because of you, we've accomplished our current successes, and you've created a possibility for our future opportunities to be achieved. So I, once again, thank you. And Jose, thank you very much for providing a newer city leadership, implementing a culture of listening and responding to our community. Important, and the feedback I've received from community shows some of the fundamentals that I really love that we've accomplished this year are having a city strategic plan. We just, our second one, it's awesome. I'd everyone, it makes it where we're headed, how we're doing it, and if we're actually achieving our goals. The clear and accurate financial reporting from Open Gov, like in achievement. I think the confidence level that the community has and how we're handling our finances is incredibly high. There are a couple of questions about how things might be handled, but they're just a couple of them. There's no big overarching concern about how we're handling our finances, and that's what's really important. The other thing I really appreciate is that we started incentivizing so that we can enhance the quality of life in our community, and we can have workforce housing and middle-income housing so that everyone can afford to live. So I'm really optimistic about the future, about housing, about business, about the economy, because the city's embarked on a recognizes all the evaluates all of our options and takes advantages of our like I said, you guys make it happen, so I really appreciate that. And most importantly, I think it's possible that we can ensure that our quality of life improves rather than diminishes, and that Durango remains the place that we all want to call home. That's important to me, and now I'm with that, I am honored to nominate Mayor Pro Tem Barbara Nosworthy as the Durango of the city, as the mayor of the city of Durango.
I'll second.
Any discussion? May we have, oh, did you want
Yeah, I know, it just was interested that as a mayor, you know, you nominate. It's all good.
I'm sorry, what?
No, no, it's all good. I was a bit off guard there. It's good.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Yusef?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Nosworthy?
Yes.
Thank goodness. Congratulations. Did we get everybody?
Yes.
Yes, congratulations. And I don't know when we actually switch.
Right, you have to
Okay, so now we go on to, see, you don't on to 10.2, election of Mayor Pro Tem.
I would very much like to nominate Melissa as Mayor Pro and also add that she was my first exposure to mayorship, and I appreciate that. And as the mayor, I will very much value having you as the, if, if elected, having you as the Mayor Pro Tem.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Nosworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Yusef?
Yes.
And Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Baxter. Just Counselor Baxter.
Takes the oath of office.
That's right, you're still mayor, that's right, still Mayor Baxter.
Yes, thank you, everyone. Now we're on to 10.3, administration of oaths of office, mayor and mayor.
I, Barbara Nosworthy, solemnly declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Colorado, and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Durango, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of mayor for the City of
I, Melissa Yusef?
I, Melissa Yusef, do solemnly declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Colorado, and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Durango, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of Mayor Pro Tem for the City of Durango.
I most certainly can. A different formation. Oh, this is a much more interesting point. I don't know if I can do this.
So we're not recalling this meeting want to add a few things if I may. First of all, I would like to read a land acknowledgement that I have prepared submitted by Indian tribe. So, thank you. For thousands of years, this region was home to numerous people, bands, tribes, and nation, nations. Culture, artistic expression, and community mores. In particular, this region was the ancestral home of the N'chou, otherwise known as the Ute, the Tene, otherwise known as the Navajo, Pueblo, Hopi, multiple Apache bands, and various other tribes and Latinx people who used and stewarded this land. I recognize that indigenous peoples were forcibly removed from their ancestral land by the US government. It is important to recognize that the narrative of this region has mostly been told from the dominant perspective without recognition of those who came before us or who, to this day, continue to thrive, create, and connect with this land. Thank you for your respect in acknowledging this legacy. I also would just like to say a few words going into this. Outgoing Mayor Baxter. We campaigned together, and we did not know each other prior to campaigning, but we had similar priorities, housing, good-paying jobs, addressing budget and transparency issues, and also the environment around us. And it's been a pleasure to both be a candidate and work with and Olivier and Jessica, thank you, thank you for your, the way you're so prepared for each meeting. That it's very, very clear, the way you put and then also, I gotta get used to Counselor, Counselor Yusef, thank you for the, first of all, your past leadership, the example you set, and your willingness to serve again. And I will come back to the mayor. You've been a wonderful example to me of what it, what to be a, how to be a good mayor in my mind. Office hours, preparation, and your passion for, particularly for housing, for looking for opportunities for the city to engage around property, to be innovative, and to really encouraging staff to think creatively and side the box. And I believe that going forward, we have another year together as a council, and I look forward to working with each of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
On that note, on to we are now at 11.1, point one, a public hearing to consider an ordinance authorizing a facility industries at the airport.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Tony Bakary, Aviation Director at the Durango La Plata County Airport. Moment, we'll share screens. Interesting, oh, there, it's behind it. Okay, well, we're here this evening to conduct a public hearing to consider an ordinance authorizing a facility lease with Agile Space Industries at the Durango La Plata. I'll provide a staff background on this prior to the public hearing. A quick background on this, the Durango La Plata County Airport acquired a 12 and a half acre parcel of previously occupied commercial land located at 820 Airport Road, which is just north northeast of the current terminal facilities at the airport. That acquisition was made in 2019 as a strategic land acquisition to enable long-term phased expansion of terminal and supporting infrastructure. On that particular parcel, there's two commercial buildings, each approximately 20 sized, the southern building, office space, the northern building, used warehouse and office space. At the time of the acquisition in 2019, all those facilities were leased back to the seller. That status remained fixed through December 2021, when there was an unexpected Chapter 11 filing by that tenant, and the facilities were left unoccupied. Thereafter, airport staff undertook a process to identify potential lessee. And what I'm bringing to you today is a proposed lease with Agile Space Industries for one of the two commercial facilities located on this parcel, 19,600 square feet warehouse and office space, which represents the northern building on this particular here, you can see a satellite image of the parcel we're referring to. As I mentioned, it's terminal facility, and we're talking about the north facility. The terms of the lease that are incorporated in today's agenda packet, I won't read these verbatim here, but as I mentioned, it's about 19,600 square building space and supporting parking and land. Allowed premise, allowed use of the premise includes design, manufacture, assembly, and testing portion systems, which is the business agile space industries. It's a five-year base term on the lease at a market rate rent of $8 a square foot, resulting in initial annual one-year rent of just over $150,000 from there. Beyond that, other keynotes, this is a standard triple net lease, where the lessee is responsible for possessory interest taxes, utility costs as on the facility. We do anticipate that should this process move forward, occupancy could occur in May of this year on that front. Benefits to the airport for executing this lease are stable rent income moving forward. Particularly, this does represent diversified revenue streams for the airport, more specifically, non-aeronautical revenue. About 90% of our overall revenue streams at the airport are directly tied to either commercial airline traffic or the resulting usage of the facility by airline traffic users. Our ability to diversify and drive non-aeronautical revenue puts us in a strong weather interruptions to commercial traffic, which the most recent pandemic would be an excellent example of type of diversified revenue. Additionally, getting a tenant into this building eliminates O and M expenses associated with cities at the airport, otherwise in the position of picking up. And then on a greater scope, the overall regional economic impact through the long-term development of aerospace testing and manufacturing. Of note, Agile Space does currently, or is an active tenant for the airport on a separate site for their test site located on the northeast portion of the airport's land holdings. And so this would represent sort of a tie-in potentially with their existing test site, and this, this functioning is support office and manufacturer space. On the regulatory, regulatory and legal side, the airport layout plan, which is our guiding document does depict the area that's encompassed upon this proposed lease premise as aeronautical in use. As I mentioned before, this parcel was acquired in 2019 with for long-term development for terminal and terminal support facilities. However, our current five-year CIP does not show us developing that parcel. Play for us, so therefore, it's well within our purview to go ahead and lease that on a five-year basis, knowing that we don't have the FAA has reviewed this lease and is in concurrence that it's fully compatible with all of our grant assurances. Additionally, the Airport Advisory Commission reviewed this proposed lease agreement and unanimously in their March meeting, and the city attorney has also reviewed the draft lease agreement. Fiscal impact, I mentioned early, earlier, at the proposed $1,000 in base rent on an annualized basis with future rent adjustments based upon CPI. And with that, I'll take any questions before the public hearing.
Actually, we'll go straight.
This is a recommendation.
Oh, thank you.
That's okay. This is, this is a challenging thing.
I'm looking at it going, okay. Right, any questions from?
I'm gonna start, since I'm gonna ask a couple of questions, just so they know the information that we got at the Airport Commission meeting.
First, I want to say thanks. That's a dangerous mic tonight. I don't know why. All right, we're gonna believe it. Okay, so thanks to Tony for all the hats you wear. I'm sure not very many airport directors are also real estate brokers and so on and so forth, and he put a ton of work into this. And so, thank you very much for all your hard work for our airport. I really appreciate it. We here for people living in Durango, love all of that. But did you do any other background information being in all that stuff?
Yes, very good question. So to Counselor Beal's point, the Airport Commission did request that I conducted some additional financial background check on the proposed tenant, and that has been done, indeed been completed. They provided both balance sheet and P&amp;L. I've reviewed those and determined that they're consistent, and they're fully able to execute this lease based on my review in addition to their long-term tenancy and solid status with the airport on the
And then, about the south building, so it's office space. I know it's been market right now renting office space to get that one taken care of. We're leasing it for, at the end of last year. Do you have any plans to potentially do operation or more warehouse?
Yeah, so to that point, the southern building has about 20,000 square feet of pure found the same level of market just due to the sheer size of an available square footage on the sheer office front as opposed to the warehouse mixed-use piece, which was much easier to try to promote. As of now, we've placed the predominance of our focus on leasing that northern building to restore effectively, and then we'll pivot our focus a little longer term and how we can potentially look at that southern building. You know, some airport commissioners, it's suggested potential alterations to the building that might make it more viable, either by subdividing the space or potentially converting it into some sort of small-time warehouse. So those will be things we'll be looking into, but we wanted to establish this income stream first before we shift.
Originally, this land was additional parking once the airport expansion came through, but that isn't in the
That's correct. We currently show that probably closer to about a 10-year development plan by the time we would actually hop the county road and sort of parcel fully into the terminal so it is very much a long-term development projection on use that would be something other outside of the commercial.
I am super excited that we can agile with more space jobs in our area, so congra-
Thank you.
Questions?
I appreciate the presentation. I think smart move, think long-term. And to use it as a leased property, even though I'm not really favorable of to be in the leasing business as a city, but in this case, it makes perfect sense. Use that for revenue stream until something happens in the future. Thank you.
Just a quick question. Can they assign the lease or sublet the lease, or happens if they sell their business?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Could they assign the lease or sublet the lease, or what would happen if they sell their business?
Gotcha. So the lease agreement does allow for assignment or sublease prior to or with the consent of the airport effectively. So such a thing would be brought to us potentially. I'd have to review the exact lease language relative to, you know, a sale. There is some specific language relative to merger acquisitions and such. And that's, at that point, that's where I would defer to our excellent city attorney on that front.
It is assignable, and a sale like that would require council review to approve an assignment.
Interesting.
So I have a question for the city attorney. Do we need a vote on this, or just a
What we're voting?
On the ordinance?
I think it's agendized as the hearing, so we'd need to open the hearing and then
So, well, this, the recommendation is that we conduct a public hearing.
Right, so conducting the public hearing, the opening
Oh, I'm sorry. I was mistaken.
Okay, so is there a motion to, I don't have to open. Yeah, I can open. I don't need a motion. Okay, so let's open the public hearing and see if there's anyone in the audience here or via Zoom who wishes to make a comment. Hearing none? I'm just checking. There's no?
No one online has raised their hand, Mayor.
I'm sorry, there's no one with raised hands?
Correct.
So now then, I'm just clarifying again with the city attorney. Now, do we actually need a motion to go into this for the ordinance?
Yeah, you close the hearing, and then you can
Okay, so I will close the hearing, and do I have a motion?
Um, go ahead, because you're on the
Yeah, the ordinance will come up in a later in the agenda.
So I'll make a motion that we we already have the public hearing.
Right, so because this is first reading on the same night as the hearing, so the actual ordinance is on the
So we don't have to do anything?
You don't need a motion now. I'm sorry.
Okay, great.
Ordinance later on.
So that will move
Because of the time nature of getting that lease in place, we
Condensed it. Yeah. So let's move on to 11.1.2. A public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Article 3 of Chapter 18, Section 34, Parentheses J of the City Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango for the purpose, purposes of allowing Class 1 electric assisted mountain bikes at Twin
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Terry Nycom, Parks and Recreation Director for the City of This will be a similar process to what you just went through, this opening a public hearing and the like. I don't have a presentation, so I'll walk through some items. This has been a six-year discussion to allow electronic or e-bikes on our community trails. In December of 2018, one of the first steps towards allowing e-bikes on our trail system was approved, and the ordinance, or Chapter 18, Section 34, was amended at that time to allow e-bikes, Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes on the Animus River Trail. Natural and soft-surface trails were not considered at that time. The discussion regarding e-bikes to move out into the natural surface and soft-surface trails continued. In June of 2020, a trial period was established and started for Class 1 e-bikes to be tested at Twin Buttes area, an open-space area. Surveys were processed or provided and taken. Surveys were processed, and data was analyzed by Fort Lewis College Associate Dean Paul Clay at that time and his students. Those, that information was presented at a February 2, 2022 joint board meeting. The joint boards consisted of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, the Natural Lands and the Multimedia, or I'm sorry, Multimodal Advisory Board. Discussion was had after that presentation at that joint board meeting. A motion was made at the joint board meeting to move forward with allowing e-bikes at Twin Buttes. However, the Multimodal Advisory Board did not have a quorum at that joint board meeting, so the, the motion went back to the individual boards. All three boards subsequently in February made motions to allow electronic-assisted e-bikes at Twin Buttes. Parks and Rec Advisory Board passed that recommendation on unanimously, as well as did the Multimodal Advisory Board. The Natural Lands Preservation Advisory Board moved it forward with a three-to-one vote. So tonight, I'm here to, there are some benefits, actually, to having e-bikes at the Twin Buttes area. Number one, there are no trails connecting to other land management agencies, L.M., or National Forest Service, and there are no conservation easements at Twin Buttes. So this is pretty much an area where we have the ability to allow e-bikes on an open, or open-space area and on our natural lands in that area. The other areas that have been in consideration are Dalla, Overend, and Horse Gulch. Those have other complications such as conservation easements, and those discussions continued. The boards wanted to move forward with e-bikes at Twin Buttes, and that's what you have before you tonight. Thank you.
I'm gonna actually open the public hearing. You're not asking for me to conduct it's not similar to the agile?
Yes.
It is. Okay, sorry.
You can open up the hearing.
I can open up the hearing. Thank you. So is there anyone in the audience or online who wishes to speak?
Mayor, we do have somebody online. Christine Jerbeck. I will go ahead and allow you to talk. If you could just state whether or not you're a city resident, you can take it away. Christine, if you can hear me, you should be able to unmute. There you go.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Christine Jerbeck, and I live in Twin Buttes, and I use the trails quite frequently. I am a hiker, not a biker. And I certainly do not mind, and in fact, do support the use of e-bikes on the trails here. But there is a big but after that, and my comments probably are more for the Parks and Rec Director, but wanted you to hear them. I would have to say that the current bicycle use and traffic on the trails, I mean, it's a multi-use trail, although some cyclists don't realize that. And in fact, when I have been hiking, I have been reprimanded by cyclists who say it is not a hiking trail. Also, I would have to say in general that bike etiquette here in Durango is disappointing to me. I formerly lived in Fort Collins. They actually had more traffic on many of their and their cyclists were very polite in using bells and announcing their presence, especially when coming up from the backside and behind hikers. That is unfortunately not so true, both at Twin Buttes and other places I've hiked in the area. And so, especially because here the trails are narrow, and there is a lot, there's big down slopes, and so when, the speed is also an issue when bicyclists are coming downhill behind you. I think, again, I don't have a problem with e-bikes, but I'm not sure if additional place, letting people know it is a multi-use trail, and, you know, asking for some politeness from the cyclists when they're coming up behind. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and for your suggestion on politeness. I think we can all appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else?
There's no one else online, Mayor.
So again, city attorney, please help me out. This is the second reading of this note, so we still don't need
It'll be first reading, but it's also later in the agenda.
Right, perfect.
So they will come up.
Great, thank you. So then we'll move on to quasi-judicial hearings, a public
You need to close the public hearing.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry.
I need to close the public hearing. Thank you so much. We'll move on to quasi-judicial hearings, a public hearing for the ZIC addition, annexation, and initial zoning, and 238 East Village preliminary plan review.
A little worried that this isn't gonna work, so let's Okay, let's just do it like this. I think it's sharing, so people on TV can see it. Thank you, Mayor Mark Williams, Community Development Department. As you said, this is the ZIC annexation. It's also an initial zoning of residential medium and a preliminary plan review. So the project is for 12 new townhomes located on Gigline Gulch Road. Property is just over an acre. The future land use for this area is residential medium, so that fits with the proposed use. Here's where the property is located. This is Fort Lewis College. These are Mercy Housing Apartments. This photograph is a little deceptive, just because Gigline Gulch Road is sort of in a canyon, and so this is much higher, and then this is much higher, and then this is power line trail. There's actually public access from this little spot right here. So residents who move in there will be able to get up to the trails pretty easily. The Planning Commission reviewed this back in February, and there's a longer waiting period for annexation, although this project wraps up the annexation, the initial zoning, and the project review itself. So as I said, there'll be 12 townhomes. There are 18 parking spaces required. They have 21 parking spaces. Each has a one-car garage. There are two-bedroom units. The site plan meets all of our standards for design, which is something that we reviewed. The units are to be owner-occupied. One of the good features of the project is it'll extend the 10-foot multi-use trail, which currently ends right at the south property line of this project. So it'll extend it a little bit farther up the hill. And then, probably the last big thing to touch on is the project is subject to fair share. Using the current fair share fee for this project would be $185,000. However, the applicant and the city have talked, we want to go one step beyond that. So we plan to apply to the state for grant funding through the state the Housing Bill 1271 Funding Program. The way that works is when someone builds, develop, when someone develops a housing project, the infrastructure cost can be directly proportional to the amount of the attainable housing. So in other words, if, let's just say it's a million-dollar for infrastructure, there are 10 units, then 500,000 can be used for those 500,000 can be directed for attainable housing. So we don't know what the amount of infrastructure cost will be yet for the but whatever that is, that will be added to the $185,000. So there should be 400, 500,000 dollars perhaps to apply towards attainable housing. And if we go to the site plan, the plan is, the townhomes are in two separate buildings. Each has six units. This is the western building closer to Gigline Gulch or College Drive on this map. The six units in here would be attainable if we get the 1271 grant. We won't find that out until September grant applications are due shortly after that. Even if we don't get the money, probably two of these could So that's something that we'll write into the fair share agreement to cover either eventuality. And then, if we do get the grant, then more details can be written into the fair share agreement in terms of how to make the HOA work and the mechanics of how that's going to operate in the future. So in terms of the site plan itself, as I mentioned, the applicant has all of the city's requirements covered. There's areas for snow storage. The landscaped areas are adequate. There are a couple of amenity areas for the residents. Here's the landscaping plan. The landscaping plan is, meets city standards as well. It's pretty standard in terms of the design. Tracy Reynolds is the architect. He's on the phone if you have questions for him later. So metal siding and then lap siding, board and batten also. All of the dimensional standards meet city standards for townhomes. All of the dimensional standards meet city standards for townhomes. The plan meets the city's strategic plan goals for creating attainable housing. It also meets LUDC goals for zoning and annexation. And the city did not receive any public comment for this application, either for this meeting or for the Planning Commission meeting. And here's the recommended motion. I won't read the whole thing. At this point, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor, if you have any questions.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. So what I'll do is I'll open the public hearing, see if there's any comment. Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak?
No one is on Zoom, Mayor.
Great. Does the applicant wish to make any statements?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have any comments, but I was just going to show a quick 3D fly-through. Takes about 30 seconds.
Oh, hey, Trace, let me promote you so you can make that presentation. Hang on.
Oops.
And Tracy, do you mind stating your full name for us?
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. This will just take about a minute here. Okay, that's it. And I can answer any questions if anybody has any.
Well, thank you, Tracy. First of all, let me just see if counsel has any questions of the staff or of the applicant.
Tracy, you've got two flat pads. It looks like they're down on the bottom on either side of the driveway. What are those?
That's stormwater detention ponds.
Ah, okay. And the other question I had, is there any reason why you're exceeding the parking requirements for this project?
No, there's not. Just, you know, a lot of people tend to fill up their garages with toys, so this way there's no question about having, having a place to park. There is no on-street parking. There's no place for people to go if, if they can't park on-site.
Okay. I was just wondering if maybe more green space wouldn't be appropriate, so.
I mean, I'm open to that.
Other questions from counsel?
Maybe a small question on how the pass-through and the fair share exactly work. These units are estimated to go for $500,000, I believe.
Yeah, 500 to mid-500s. The market's changing every day, so I'm not going to guarantee anything right now.
What is the attainable value that we're looking at?
Whatever money gets kicked in, we would just take that directly off that sales price. So if the market value is 550 and there's $100,000 available to offset that, then the price becomes 450.
And what would staff expect in return for, for making that donation?
What we would like to see are units that are long-term affordable, so an affordability period of at least 40 years. We'll have to write that into the annexation agreement, fair share agreement, HOA works.
So it would be deed restricted?
It would be deed restricted, right.
In that sense? Okay. No, appreciate it. Thank you for that presentation. It looks really interesting.
Other questions?
This doesn't relate to the project itself, but according to the map, it looks like the property to the south of there. Is that true?
I think the south of there is the, immediately south is.
No, but the south of it, just right there. If you go back to your map, I believe it shows that.
Tracy, could you stop sharing?
That one. There you go. Oh, and the one that we had in our packet, it shows Brooks is below the green and then below that, there's two properties that are City of Durango.
So not this property, but these two?
The further, yeah. And just a question, are those, are those, is the grade appropriate for housing?
I don't know without looking at it. My guess is it would be challenging.
I just wonder if that's been included in some of our evaluation of city properties for housing. Okay, great. Thank you.
Very good.
That was just my, I just wanted to bring that up before we lost track of that one.
Any other questions? I would just like to thank the staff and Tracy for working. This is another example of working on trying to build attainable housing into all of our efforts. So thank you. Thank you for your creative thinking and your willingness to go after additional funding. Your motion?
I would make a motion to approve the ZIC addition annex, initial zoning of residential medium, and the preliminary plan review. Direct the applicant to submit the final plan for review, to prepare the annexation ordinance once the final plan review is.
I'll second. Any discussion? May we have a roll call, please? Or vote, please?
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
And Mayor Nosworthy?
Yes. Okay, so next we move on to 11.2.2, a public hearing to consider the Hartman-Bransome bound.
Okay, I'll use the same format I guess Mark did. Thank you, Mayor Nosworthy, members of the council, Dan Armentano with the Community Development Department. This is a pretty simple request for a boundary adjustment. So I'll go through this fairly quickly. Quick overview, again, simple boundary adjustment request between two residential parcels that both share the. The shift in the property line will correct an existing encroachment. There's a small shed that's right on the property line. And the change will reflect the historic property line, sorry, the historic fence line as well. Total size of the transferred property is just a little over 1,000 square feet wedge. And both property owners have agreed to the change and provided that in writing. Here's a context map showing the location of the two properties outlined in red there. This is Junction Street over here to the east, Lovis down south of these two parcels. Here's the Four Corners Healthcare Center there. And if we take a closer look, you can see the site area of the shed. That's pretty clearly right on the property line. And if you can see my pointer, this is the historic fence that's been there and has generally been recognized as the property line. So this is the proposed plat. You can see the shed there will be now on the southern parcel. And there's a slight jog here in the new property line, just showing, or really actually addressing a setback concern. Other than that, it's a pretty standard boundary adjustment, very minor change. By code, boundary adjustments are processed the same as a minor subdivision. Because it's such a simple request, most of the LUDC criteria for a subdivision do not apply. However, the change does comply with setback and lot coverage minimums. And the new lot sizes are still in alignment with the comp plan's low-density future land use. As for the strategic plan, something as simple, simple has fairly minimal applicability. Broadly, it could apply to the AEO objective in that it addresses an encroachment that could potentially impact future sale of either property. We haven't received any public comment on this request. Planning Commission reviewed it on March 28th and unanimously recommended approval. And I've got a motion on screen. We are recommending approval. It's the same as you have in your packet, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Dan. I will open the public comment. Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to make a comment?
There is no one on Zoom, Mayor.
Counsel, any questions? No questions from counsel? I will close the public comment. Do we have a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the Hartman-Branson boundary adjustment with the findings and conditions as discussed in this public hearing and outlined in the Planning Commission's staff report.
I'll second. Discussion? Roll, a call, please.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Nosworthy?
Yes. Great. Now we move on to introduction of ordinances, 12.1, an ordinance authorizing of agile space incorporated at 820 Airport Road and declaring an effective date. City Attorney, do you have?
Yes, Mayor, this is ordinance O-2022-15, and this follows the public hearing that you conducted a few moments ago regarding the approval of that lease.
Is there any discussion from counsel on this ordinance? Do we have a motion?
I'll second.
And then I'll ask again, any questions or discussion from counsel? Let's have a vote.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Nosworthy?
Yes.
On to 12.2, an ordinance amending Article III of Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Durango, regulating the use of vehicles on parks, trails, and open space and creating an additional exception for the use of Class I electrical-assisted bicycles on trails located within the Twin Buttes development within the city and declaring an effective date.
Yes, Mayor, this is ordinance O-2022-16. Again, this follows the discussion earlier in the public hearing regarding approval of Class I and Class II e-bikes on the trails at Twin Buttes.
Any questions for the City Attorney or staff? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2022-16 regarding electric-assisted bicycles on trails within the Twin Buttes development.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I think it's kind of an exciting first trail to approve. And I appreciate staff's efforts and the advisory boards working together on this issue. And thank everyone for their patience in getting here. And I do look forward to following up conversations with staff on kind of processes for how we will go about evaluating future trails.
I absolutely agree.
Full-heartedly agree. It's been a long time coming. Any other comments? Let's have that vote.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Nosworthy?
Yes.
There's no general business items tonight. We will go on to council reports and, it's an opportunity to report on meetings recently attended and to discuss topics not otherwise apparent. The only one we have listed right now is Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Counselor Bosmans, do you want to give us an update?
Yes, I will give you an update. During the April 13, we got an update on us being awarded the BMX State Championship, the upcoming, and obviously the bridge on the 32nd Street was installed and expected to be built by the end of June. We had the same update on Durango Mesa Park as council received today. There were design concepts for the pickleball courts discussion on Lake Nook. And then the discussion went on on capital improvement projects, the prioritization process, and the review of that prioritization process. And that's all I had.
Any questions for Counselor Bosmans on this report? Any others with updates?
I wasn't in attendance right in the meeting minutes for, the study group met for improved healthcare in the Platte County that you and I are on. Basically, they're putting together documentation to publish with steps on how to kind of meet the gap that we're seeing with our area. We went through it essentially and kind of made edits. Patrick Sharp with Centura is going to give it, the new revised document to others at Centura and provide edits at our next meeting. So we don't know the date for that yet until he gets that back to us. But there was a couple of things that came out that Mercy seeking to have additional primary care prior to July 1st, so that would be exciting if we're able to do that. Not, actually did. And that was kind of the big one out of that. I will also say, the airport commission meeting is on Thursday, but the Las Vegas route is being reinstated starting June 9th. So non-stop service between Durango and, we'll start through Frontier starting June 9th.
Sure. Eggs and Issues was on April 7th, and it was a fabulous presentation. It was a state of the state, the county and the city. And there's a state representative from a group that basically organizes the 22 counties on the west slope of Colorado, so speaks as a unified voice. And Commissioner Porter Norton gave a talk about the county and I got to speak about the city. And it was, it was really exciting. It was very nice to do that in person again. And then on April 14th, the Durango Design Awards were first time in, I may get this wrong, but it seems like it was 10 years or something like that. 20 years, okay. Twice as long. First time in 20 years. So it was awesome. We had a lot of people show up and there were the Design Review Board, the Planning Commission, the Historic Preservation Board, and the Creative Economy Commission, all gave out awards for different types of, like outstanding bump out or outstanding historic preservation sustainability project. It was great fun. Everybody loved it. And I think it's, so the other thing that I got to do was go to Santa Rita Park to celebrate Arbor Day with the park. And they got to plant trees and learn about all sorts of fun things. Interestingly enough, we give a present, we give an award also for, I think it's Tree City, well, it's the Growth Awards, is that what, Terry? Was it Growth Awards? Is that what that was that we gave? You don't remember? Okay. All right, sorry. To Ryan. Just a friend who helped out? Yeah. Okay. But, so Ryan works for the Forest Service. He's also on the Natural Lands Preservation. And apparently he has done so much work with our forestry division that we wanted to give him a thank you. So that was very interesting too, to have him. And then we had Woody the Owl show up and the kids adored him. Woody was awesome. So it was a great time. Had a great, it was a beautiful day and it was wonderful. That's all I know.
We had a Chamber of Commerce meeting. Also had the Convention Center people meet with them, ask them to support a downtown convention center. As we are aware, they, these, this group is reinvestigating the feasibility of a conference center and most recently met with the chamber. Tim Walsworth did inform the chamber that they are looking at our lodgers tax overage funding as a source for beginning the process of putting plans together and looking at the feasibility of this project. Bid is also supporting seed money to start a capital campaign effort for the conference center. The chamber- The chamber has not fully determined yet if they will support the concept, but they're, but the chamber will be coming to, or the, the group will be coming actually to the chamber board meeting next. And that was interesting. And just a reminder again that the Durango Chamber of Commerce, Durango Rocks Event is May 3rd. Tickets are on sale now, and it starts at 5:00 PM at Fort Lewis College. And they're going to have a cocktail hour, and they're going to have music with from IM Music called Cruise and Castaways. And this is a fun event. They talk about the business, Business of the Year, Nonprofit of the Year, Entrepreneur of the Year, and many more. So unfortunately, this one is on a Tuesday night, so none of us will. But I hope that the community does. It's a great event, and tickets go on sale at durango-business.org.
Great. I just have a few items. First of all, don't forget Earth Day Parade starts at 10:15, I believe, on Saturday. Get show support. I always say there is no Plan B, so think about that. I also wanted to say that earlier this evening, we had an executive which we, as counsel, to meet with the city manager and talk about our evaluations, that's something new that we've worked on through this past year. We'll be doing that with each of our appointees on a having an executive session, just touching base on how things, the performance is going. But through that process, I learned something new, and I want to give Jose and maybe Erin a chance to at least brag a little bit about your invitation to speak at a conference about some of the work going on here in Durango.
Oh, thank you very much, Mayor Nosworthy. It's kind of tough to get through. It's like, okay, starting with that transition, so. But I know, appreciate the opportunity, just letting, was letting the council know that both myself and Erin were reached out by GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, their annual conference in Austin, to do two sessions. One, I think Erin's doing on HR recruitment and talent and hiring in this competitive market, and talking a little bit about some of the things we Durango, and then myself on rebuilding trust after financial, financial, what I'd call issues. Would be a best place to do it and just talk about how Durango has begun moving forward and rebuilding the trust of the community.
Thank you. I think that's great. And let me invite a huge thanks to the staff. I echo some of the comments that the outgoing mayor made about nothing's possible without the staff. So thank you so much. And unless anyone has something to add, I'll adjourn this meeting.